Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to now call this meeting to order Village of Deerfield Border Trustees Meeting, February 20th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Math Childers is absent. Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jerry. If we could all rise. For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two chairs over from me and immediately next to Ben is an empty chair. It's draped with, over the, whatever, the dais is draped with black. And the reason for that is Bill Seiden passed away. And we're going to offer a moment of silence in just a moment, but I want to say a couple of things about him and how much we will miss him. Personally, I started getting involved with Village stuff many years ago due to him. He encouraged me to get involved and sorry for all of you that that happened, but I'm not sorry. I considered him a dear friend. He served on the library board for six years, this board for over two decades, and was a huge contributor to us and to this community. He passed away on February 8th following a brief illness. He was elected Village trustee in 1999, chaired the village's residential teardown task force. And as I said, he was on the library board and was a Village liaison to the library board from this board for years thereafter. He always listened to residents' concerns, always made that a priority. And when he did, it wasn't just kind of like, yeah, I'll get back to you. He meant it. And he did so for many years. He leaves behind his dear family, his wife Janie, children Linda, Bill, Wendy, and their spouses and grandchildren, Sean, Hannah, Henry, and Topher. So I'd like to take a moment for all of us to give a moment of silence in memory of Bill Seiden. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the January 2024 Public Works Departmental Objective Report. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. I'm pleased to present tonight the January 2024 Departmental Objectives Report. And so this is a look back at 2023 and then looking forward to 2024 and some of the endeavors that we're planning on embarking on over the next year. Before I get started, I'd like to thank my staff for basically doing everything that's in the report. And, you know, they're the ones who execute everything. You know, I do, you know, I do my part, but for the most part, these are the guys that are doing the heavy lifting. The Public Works team and the engineering team both working together make a great and winning team for the village. I would like to first start out with a brief presentation on the objectives. And then a few, couple of months ago, the board asked that I prepare something for sewer lining. And I just have a couple of videos that I wanted to run through as part of this report. And I think the best way to show it is by showing a couple of brief videos just so that you see exactly what it is. And I can explain as we're going along what it is that we're doing daily. And as you drive by, you see, you know, some of the sewer lining stuff ongoing. So I think it'll be good walking around knowledge for you to have. In 2023, as you know, we completed the Waukegan Road water main replacement project. This is not mine. Should I shut that? Maybe I should shut that. Wrong PowerPoint, guys. The Waukegan Road Water Main Project was replacement of water main between Deerfield Road and North Avenue. And it was really overdue. It probably could have been done 15, 20 years ago, but for good reason it wasn't. It was a challenging project. And so we had contractor and staff working overnight in the downtown area. And then water main replacement all the way on up to North Avenue. That work is now complete and was complete in the fall and was done basically in advance of the IDOT resurfacing project that's coming up this year along Waukegan Road. So as you know, IDOT is planning to resurface Waukegan Road from Lake Cook Road where they ended a couple of years ago, all the way on up to North, all the way up to 22, actually, Illinois 22. So heading right through the village. We also completed meterhead replacement project and completed the water line service inventory, which is an IEP A requirement. We have a phosphorus removal project that was completed at the wastewater treatment plant. And that was, that was completed at the end of the year and is now fully functional and we'll start our testing phase here shortly. We awarded the 2024 Street Rehab Project. That's about a $4 million project that will be taking place this year and resurfacing and reconstructing many streets throughout the village as we normally do. We've received approval to purchase trucks and equipment. And as you know, trucks and equipment are difficult to procure these days. And so with a long order, with a long procurement period of up to two years, we now have two trucks, or one truck coming this week, and then four trucks, we're told, coming in March. So getting on that waiting and that line has helped us quite a bit. We received a $5 million federal grant for Hazel Avenue for the reconstruction project that's beginning, that'll begin next spring. And thank you to the board and mayor for your support on engineering and with everything else that went along with that. It's a leap of faith, but it worked. And getting the grant is a huge deal for us. We've upgraded the SCADA operations with respect to the water system operation. And that, though, goes unseen by many people, is a huge endeavor for Public Works and engineering. And also, it just helps the operation of our system. Guys, you know, people getting called at night, people being able to operate remotely, it's a big deal for us and it took a lot of work for the folks to make that happen. We continue our operations ongoing, which include engineering reviews, which are slightly down from previous years, tree removal permits right on par with average year. And both of those have been transitioned into the online permitting section. So Open Gov, now we're now receiving permit applications through their, through that portal for those. We continue on with drainage inspections for small, and small projects for drainage in neighboring backyards. So two or three neighbors get together and they have a localized drainage issue, we meet with them. We often devise engineering improvements for some yards to help improve drainage in those areas. We typically have between, you know, 12 and 15 of those ongoing at any period of time. Tree inventory is complete. And as you know, we received a 50% grant through the Morton Arboretum for the tree inventory. And so that's now complete and we can catalog every tree on village-owned property. We've successfully managed the backflow tracking program, which has reached a 91% compliance rate. Just by mode of comparison, most villages are in the 80% range. So we're well above where most villages are at with their compliance rate. Projects in development include Hazel Avenue, which, as I mentioned, has a grant attached to it. It includes a round of Phase III engineering interviews to select engineering consultants for that project. So with a project of that scope and magnitude, we do have to have a full-time engineer in the field to help us oversee that project, not to mention the documentation that goes along with receiving federal money. Park Avenue and the Northwest Quadrant redevelopment is underway. Our provided infrastructure project, the Northbrook Water, Northbrook Water Main connection, two of those two projects are intertwined with each other. And the Northbrook Water Main Connection is moving along at a snail pace, but I assure you, it's moving along. It just takes time for something like that to get pushed forward. We've kicked off, we're kicking off the design engineering for the generator replacement at the Deerfield Road Pumping Station. The generator there is coming up on 40 years old. And so we're right now in the process of selecting an engineer to do design work for us. We have an ADA transition plan that's in the works and salt building structural repairs. You may recall that we have a salt building at Public Works and that houses about 1,500 tons of rock salt. That building, just based on the environment, the steel in that building corrodes over time. It's about 35 years old. And so there are some structural repairs that are needed for that building. And I'll get on, I'll talk a little bit more about salt in a little bit, but that's one of the projects that are planned for this year. We have done planned reviews for Lake Cook Road Tiff, the downtown Tiff, and engineering review for many different commercial developments throughout the village, which include Parkway North, Wilmot Road, Shake Shack, proposed developments at Deerbrook Mall, et cetera. Some of them I can't really name, but we're involved in pretty much all of them. Green initiatives are also moving forward. As you know, we purchased now three EVs for Public Works. We have charging stations for them. We are testing them. It appears that the inspection vehicles are really, really working out well. We have a, one of our folks in Public Works is using one for as a utility locating truck, which is working out really well for us. Great driving around village vehicles and pull in and charge and go on your way. So they're pretty, they're working out pretty well. We've also worked on nativizing several new areas throughout the village, which includes the Metro right of way north of the Deerfield Road train station. You'll see that later on the agenda tonight. We've had a very minor snow season this year. As you know, it seems like winter has come to a close almost. Not quite sure yet, but, and it may be early to call that, but we still have.
You just fixed it. You just fixed it. Thank you.
It's your fault.
This is planned because I want to use some of the rock salt that we have.
Yeah. It's in the 90-year ears.
We do have 1,900 tons of rock salt that we still have to receive this year. The 1,500 that we have on hand is in addition to that. So it's a completely different problem than we've had. You know, we've been on one end of the spectrum and the other and everywhere in between. And this year, we have a lot of rock salt. Now, in addition to that, this week I received an email from Lake County and they're asking us for salt numbers for the 24, 25 season. So it's going to look at our crystal ball and figure out what we need to do. But the salt building and the structural repairs for that kind of hang in the balance on whether we can move that amount of rock salt out of the building and do the repairs and kind of get everything done on time. So. Other Public Works items are on track. We performed leaf collection and leaf collection this year, or I should say last year, we collected 8,000 cubic yards of leaves, which is the most leaves that we've collected since probably about 10 or 15 years. I think it's been quite some time since we've collected that volume. The, we continue to perform water samples, repair broken water mains. We've had about 50 water main breaks in 2023. And we tracked about 6.5% unaccounted for water in 2023. So this is a really great number and this goes back to our meter replacement project that we had and the meter had replacements. So it would appear that metering is really where the water loss is occurring. You know, in years where we have a lot of water main work, we tend to lose a lot of water. Obviously, water main breaks cause that, but metering is a big one, especially on commercial properties. And where we're not, if we're not metering commercial properties who are some of our larger users, if those are not being metered properly, then we do have unaccounted for water.
So the meters are leaking or they're inaccurate?
They're just running slow.
Yeah, so what happens to, when a meter gets older is it starts to, it starts to run slow. And so instead of grabbing 100%, it'll grab 90, 97.5 and then 96 and so on. So, so metering is really important. You know, we calibrate the meters coming into the village, or I should say Highland Park does under our supervision. And then we need to make sure that our metering infrastructure is up to snuff throughout the village and our own system.
Hey, Bob, on that topic, 15 years ago, how much was our non-metered water percentage?
23%.
Wow. How many?
23%.
And now we're six?
Six and a half.
So it's really water main replacement, meter replacement, all that, the concerted effort by the team is, and Eric will tell you how much that's worth, but that's, that's, that's seven figures a year.
I think it's something we quantified it and it was about half a million dollars a year in, on account of four water.
Wow.
And so we're, so we're paying for the water on the way in. We get it from, you know, from Highland Park and then, you know, we don't sell it. So we're just losing, it's going into the ground somewhere or it's not being metered at the appropriate place. We're also, we're still land applying bio-solids or sludge from the wastewater treatment plant. We recently went out to bid and you'll see that later on the agenda tonight. But that's also something that we're tracking because our ability to land apply that might be hindered at some point in time. And this is, there's a long discussion on that one. I won't get into it, but if anybody has questions about it, I'd be happy to talk with you about it. The next thing that I wanted to kind of go over is sewer lining. And the group asked just a little bit to have a little brief discussion about sewer lining, which I haven't, you know, I thought this would be a good opportunity to do that.
And let's see if. And we've been actively sewer lining, Bob, at least for the 17 years I've been here. I don't know when we started that, but we're putting significant investment in that.
Yes. So, so we started sewer lining in 04, 05. And so just before I got here, before you got here.
I was three.
But, you know, we weren't doing it to the extent that we're doing it now. And so we kind of started, you know, really hitting it a little bit harder about 10 years ago. And some of the members of the board that were here may recall the conversations that we had about I and I and about sewer lining and different defects that we had in the system. And it was a pretty big deal at the time. A lot of other things have overshadowed that at this point, but it's still something that's running in the background for us and it's really, it's really important for us. Hence the half a million dollars that we spend every year on a contractor to do that work for us. So every day, you know, we have our own sewer division and every day they go out mostly televising, cleaning sanitary sewers and storm sewers. And the picture on the screen right now is a picture of what a lot of our sanitary sewers used to look like. You can see on the top, on the top where there's no pipe and it's just missing. That, it's not supposed to look that way. It's supposed to be a pipe.
Clay, clay-colored.
So this is a concrete pipe and the concrete pipe broke away at the, you know, from the top. It just collapsed in. And so that's a structural defect. So we have been through every inch of sanitary sewer, every foot throughout the village, every inch of storm sewer. We've televised, we've cleaned, we know the condition of our sewers. We have, everything is marked in GIS, stuff that has structural defects like this one that you can see. Everything is, we know where everything's at. We know all the problems. As we get to a street rehab project, typically we've already lined it. We like to line a sanitary sewer before we get to the project because the disruption of all the heavy equipment could cause this to happen. But, so as we, you know, before we get to a street rehab project, when we televise it, we note issues and deficiencies like this. And then during that project, we can repair them. And so we do the repair, then we come back and we line through it. So really, all of our pipes, you know, as we do street rehab, you know, it's either a water main, which a lot of times we replace the water main, but often it's sewer and storm sewer, where we're repairing those and we're lining them as we go. So really hardening our system. Insituform is a contractor that we've used before in the past. They've been on our projects and they're kind enough to prepare a video and put it on YouTube for all of us and for the world to see. So I'm going to just show this video. This is very brief and then I have another one and I'll explain it as we go along.
Insituform's flagship cured-in-place pipe technology, or CIPP, is a pipe within a pipe installed without digging. Resin-saturated coated felt tubing is inverted or pulled into the existing pipe. Hot water or steam is then circulated throughout the tubing, curing the resin and forming a tight-fitting, jointless, corrosion-resistant pipe within a pipe. Service laterals are then restored using a robotically controlled cutting device. Finally, the rehabilitated pipe is fully inspected by closed-circuit TV. Insituform's trenchless technology is the world's most trusted pipe rehabilitation solution.
Okay, so that's, that's a really quick, just kind of, I guess, video of how the sewer lining works. I do have something that's a little bit longer that I want to show you.
That's the methodology we use now?
That is. And so you'll, so the next video is something that you'll see as you're driving through the village. When you see, you know, you're not going to see an Insituform truck this year, but you may next year, but you'll see a Vigis sewer truck and they're light blue. And you'll see this exact operation and this is what they're doing. They're lining sewers and here goes. So this is, this is after we've already identified a location that needs to be lined. So they'll come through and they, and they prepare, they'll video record the pipe. This is a pipe that's in good condition. And, you know, it's actually in really good condition. It's probably older, that's why they're lining it. But they have to make sure that they can line the pipe before they actually go in there to do the work. So they clean it, they televise it, and then they come, and then they come in with this equipment to do, to do the actual lining portion of it. And that's the liner that goes into the pipe. What they do is they run it through this machine and then they invert it. Let's see what they inverted, how they inverted.
And Bob, this is an epoxy. It's a, it's a, it's a plastic resin material that's not subject to degradation over time or with.
Yeah, this material is impregnated with the epoxy. So they, so they fill it with, they're pushing air through this. And by, in doing so, they're pushing this liner into the pipe.
Blow it up and.
They blow it up. This is inside a manhole. It's inside a manhole structure. It'll go right through the manhole like this. They line right through it.
How do they deal with seams where it meets up with existing liner that's already there?
They don't line with an existing liner.
So.
So.
If there's a crack.
I'm going to pause this here.
If there's a crack in a pipe, maybe that's the question, Mary. If, if there's a crack in the existing pipes, how does this fix that?
Yeah, it just, it just.
Well, it just goes over top of it.
Right on the inside of it. Goes right over the inside of it.
But I'm assuming if we're lining all, the majority or all of our sewers, we will come to a place where the new liner will butt up to someplace we've already lined it.
Okay, good question. They go from manhole to manhole.
Okay.
So there's no lining over an existing liner. I think in theory you could line, you could line through a pipe that's already been lined.
Yeah.
You know, say 50 years from now.
And you just make it smaller.
Yeah, it gets smaller and smaller every time you line it. So.
But also remember the liner has less friction than the old pipe.
It does.
So it flows better. So there's engineering pieces that.
Right.
So you don't need it as big.
It can be a little, it could be a quarter inch smaller and still function really better.
Right, that's true.
It's smoother.
It takes about, it takes about half an inch to about 5/8 of an inch out of the diameter, the inside diameter of the pipe.
Wow.
So now, now you'll see where they punctured inside this pipe and they're going to run steam through it. And this is what you probably see mostly as you're driving by. You see them steam curing it. So they, they first push the pipe, the liner in, and then they steam it to cure it. And that's what causes it to harden.
And when you say cure, is that any steel? Is that the same thing?
So the pipe has been impregnated with, with the epoxy.
Yep.
It needs a heat to activate that.
I understand.
Yeah, so once it, once the heat activates it, it becomes hard, rock hard like a pipe. So now it, so now. So now they're just, they're, it takes about four hours for the sewer to line, for the liner to cure. Now they're cutting out the top of the pipe inside the manhole. That's what it looks like on the inside of the manhole. And then they come through afterwards and they're reinstating every one of the sanitary services to the homes that's inside the pipe. So they run their camera through there, they find the, they find the sanitary services and then they cut them back out again to reinstate them. And that's a brand-new pipe. That's basically a lined pipe right there. It's in really good shape.
And what's your estimated life on those pipes?
They say 50 years.
Could be.
Could be longer.
Double that. Certainly more than the clay tile that were replaced.
Clay tiles have been in the ground for a pretty long time, too. And they probably said, they probably gave them a 50-year lifespan and some of them have been in the ground for 100 years. Same with water main, that's, that's got 100-year lifespan. And, you know, we've got pipe that's surpassed 100 years. So that's all I had planned for sanitary sewer lining. And that concludes the report. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment that this report is outstanding. You guys do just yeoman's work day in and day out. Sometimes we don't see it, sometimes we don't hear it, but it's the work that's necessary to keep our infrastructure solid and stable. And you do a tremendous job to you and your department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Minutes of the previous meeting, February 5th, 2024.
Move approval.
Second. I will abstain on the voice vote. Is there a voice vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries. Those in payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now's the time of our meeting where we offer an opportunity for public, for the public to make a comment. Is there anyone, no one signed in, but is there anyone who's joined the meeting who would like to make a public comment? Mr. Foote, perhaps? No? Okay. Any, anyone? Yes, you did. Okay, no public comment. Let's go on to our reports. Report 2422, consideration in action on a reported recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals concerning request for relief from Article 204 H3A. The Deerfield zoning ordinance for the property located 725 Fox Hunt Trail to permit the installation of a fence within the defined front yard, four and a half feet in height, in lieu of the maximum three feet high.
A public hearing was held on January 16th, 2004 by the BZA to consider request of petitioners Nicholas Garvey and Courtney Wyler, 725 Fox Hunt Trail, Deerfield, Illinois. The petitioners are requesting permission to install a 4.5-foot fence in the defined required front yard located on a reversed corner lot in the Kings Cove subdivision in lieu of a three-foot fence height limitation fence as specified in the Deerfield zoning ordinance. The Board of Zoning Appeals conclude the requested modification was based on a reasonable use of the land and satisfied the standards for modification specified in Chapter 13 of Deerfield zoning ordinance. Following its consideration, the BZA voted five to zero in favor of recommending the granting of the modification.
Are the petitioners here? Do you want to say anything?
No, it's okay with everybody for us to get a fence.
Okay. Please, if you, please come up, introduce yourself. Microphone's right there.
Hello, everyone. My name's Nick Garvey. My wife and I moved here in October. We were looking to install a fence and, pardon me, looking to install a fence and the road that it's along is apparently our legal front yard, but it's covered with trees. And we were hoping that, sorry, I suffer from anxiety.
You're doing just fine.
It's covered with trees and we were just hoping to put a privacy, a small fence so that we could have our dog and our daughter in there without having any issues with anybody getting in or out. Sorry. And so we petitioned to have this fence put in there. It's going to be aluminum, 90% visibility and there realistically shouldn't be any change in terms of the visibility from the roadway, given that it's going to be on the interior of our landscaping. So we're just requesting that it be approved. And I do have a picture of the fence if needed for the type of fence.
I see our chairman for the ZBA is here. Anything, Bob, you want to add?
No, no comment.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the board?
No, it's just, it's a weird situation.
Yes.
But the, the part of the. But the part of the lot that's narrower is defined as the front yard. That's just how it's done. So that's perfectly reasonable request. I'm totally in favor of it, but that's why you had to go through this.
Yeah, we figured that it wasn't going to be, anything that should bother anybody, it's going to be set back very far from what looks like our front yard. So I don't think anybody will notice any difference, but we'll be able to play with the dog without having to worry about him getting out, so.
I don't either. Anyone from the public want to offer any comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I will look for a motion to approve the report and direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So just let them, we'll be, the ordinance will come likely at the next village board meeting, so there's at least one more board meeting ahead.
Yeah, so this was a, this was a motion to approve the recommendation and to have Ben and village attorney prepare an ordinance that will come up for our final stamp of approval on the ordinance at our next meeting.
Okay, great.
You're in good shape. Our consent agenda, we have a number of items on our consent agenda. I'm going to read those items and then ask Andrew to maybe provide a little bit of an introduction to what we have in front of us. Item 2413-1, an ordinance authorizing a special use to permit 60,000 square foot additional general of additional general medical dental office space at 707 Lake Cook, and an exception to the parking requirements. 2414-1, ordinance authorizing text amendments to the I-2 Limited Industrial District. 2415-1, an ordinance authorizing text amendments to the I-1 Office Research District and the C-4 Entertainment Limited Retail Business District. 2416-1, an ordinance authorizing text amendments to the zoning ordinance to require planned development approval of developments two acres or more. Item 2417-1, an ordinance authorizing text amendments to the zoning ordinance for sports and recreational court regulations. And item 2418-1, an ordinance authorizing text amendments to the zoning ordinance for the construction and demolition signs and for drive-through menu boards.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, we provided a detailed PowerPoint presentation going through really the line items of each change in the ordinance as presented here, so today I'll just do a high-level overview. And for the I-2 district, the intent here is a couple things. First, to define warehouse and distribution facilities. I should say to better define them. There was a definition, but we further clarified that the village has a prohibition on motor freight terminals, logistics centers, fulfillment centers, and facilities used for the parking and storage of moving trucks or vans. The intent here is to set a clear expectation with the public and the development community that these types of industrial uses are not permitted in the village. Any warehouse, another key provision I should say, is a warehouse and distribution facility that's over 50,000 square feets, 50,000 square feet, is a special use. But in addition to that, it will be required to, the petition will be required to submit a traffic plan that shows the traffic routes for the ingress and egress from the facility to minimize traffic impacts as much as possible, and that traffic plan can be modified unilaterally by staff on an annual basis if needed. With regards to the I-1 district, here, the zoning code amendments are serving to help reoccupy office spaces with medical and dental uses as remote work has shrunk the office demand. This will help landlords fill the vacant space, improve the value of the buildings, bring more people to the village who will patronize nearby retail and food establishments. Then we have some changes to our planned unit development ordinance. This essentially matches our current practice, but we've taken a different angle at it, and so any site that's two acres or larger will now be required to be approved through a planned unit development process. We have sport courts, and here we created a new definition for what a sport court is, and this distinguishes them from patios, and the sport courts would require buffering and setbacks. And then we have two signage changes. The first is to streamline the menu board sign process. This would only require approval by the Appearance Review Commission and no longer would require the need for a public hearing. And then, secondly, we updated the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the municipal code, which has a requirement for construction site signage. And that's an overview of the changes here presented.
Staff has done a terrific job at putting this together. It went through the plant commission, and now it also, I believe, came to us on February 5th.
Yep.
And now it's on our consent agenda. Thank you for the overview. Are there any comments by the board to these text amendments and changes to our zoning ordinance?
Very thorough.
Yep. Any comments from the public? Thank you. So I now will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Old business, we have none. New business, we have a number of items. The first is a public hearing for the proposed Lake Cook Road redevelopment TIF area, also known as TIF number four. This is item 2427. I will now ask for a motion to open up the TIF public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The public hearing is open. Andrew.
Thank you. In compliance with the TIF Act, notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the Deerfield Review on January 25th and February 1st. Additionally certified mailings with notice of the public hearing were sent to all taxpayers of record within the proposed TIF district and within 750 feet of the TIF boundary as well as all interested registered parties. We received no written testimony in advance of tonight's meeting. I'll make some introductory remarks, and then I'll turn it over to Phil McKenna, our consultant with Ryan LLC, to further discuss the key elements of the TIF plan and the TIF qualification report. The village uses TIF as an economic development tool rarely and only when warranted. This is only the fourth time in the village's history that we've used TIF, so I'd just like to briefly go over that history. First, TIF number one was established on Lake Cook Road in 1982 and expired in 2004. It was 324 acres. It had an EAV that was frozen at $14 million, and again, in 1982, and that ended in 2004 at $171 million, so over 1,000% increase. During the life of the TIF, approximately $120 million was returned to all the taxing districts in the form of surplus distributions. It created the Lake Cook Road Business Corridor that also allowed for construction of Deerfield Public Works Facility, which is also a park district facility, the Patty Turner Center, and redevelopment of Brickyards Park. TIF number two was established in the village center in 1986, and that was terminated in 2008. The TIF was 140 acres. The EAV at that time was frozen at $13 million, and that TIF ended at $97 million, over a 600% increase. And again, millions of dollars of surplus funds were distributed to all of the taxing districts. It created the institutional corridor, perhaps most notably the successful retail development at Deerfield Square and Deerfield Village Center, among other community amenities. Notably, both of those TIFs were ended one year early. TIF number three, most recently, that was just established in January of 2023. That TIF is about 41 acres in the downtown area. It was designed to promote redevelopment of underutilized property and return to productive uses that strengthen the tax base through high-quality redevelopment that would otherwise not occur. And now we're at proposed TIF number four. This consists of eight tax parcels, and it's about 45 acres. The TIF redevelopment area is thoughtfully designed to include only the most warranted properties that would not receive private investment but for the creation of the TIF. The entity, the TIF, the entirety of the TIF, I should say, includes the vacant Walgreens buildings on the south side of Lake Cook Road as well as the Embassy Suites Hotel. The TIF redevelopment area has experienced a lagging EAV, and TIF investment can stop that trend, raise the EAV, and the associated tax benefits for all the taxing bodies. An important comparison to note is the proposed TIF has an EAV of $45 million. And they compare that to the village overall EAV of $1.5 billion, so we're talking about 3% of the total EAV. The redevelopment plan and TIF boundary is designed in a way to bring the greatest benefit with the least burden to the community and the other taxing districts. The plan contemplates investments in retail and entertainment uses, public infrastructure, public amenities that are consistent with the village's comprehensive plan and the C-4 zoning district. Maybe more importantly, the TIF is designed as to not create single-family homes and/or large apartments with three-plus bedrooms, for example, that would place a particularly difficult burden on the school districts through the generation of school-aged children. To the extent that mixed-use developments with apartments are developed in the TIF district, those would be residential units that would contain affordable housing, and I should say, at least partially affordable housing, and one or two small-bedroom units, again, to not generate that school-aged children. There are several objectives outlined in the redevelopment plan. They're related to strengthening the village's economic base, reducing deterrents to private investment, improving infrastructure, including but not limited to the roadways, storm sewers, water main, and streetscape. In accordance with the TIF Act, the village convened a joint review board, which met on January 4th, to consider and make a recommendation regarding the redevelopment plan and the designation of the proposed Lake Cook Road TIF district. The JRB consisted of representatives selected by Cook County, Village of Deerfield, Northfield Township, Northbrook School District 27, Glenbrook High School District 225, Oakton Community College District, Deerfield Park District, the Northbrook Rural Fire Protection District, and a public member, which was Jack Freego. The JRB did review and consider the public record, planning documents, and proposed ordinances related to proposed TIF and the eligibility study that was prepared by Ryan LLC. After consideration and discussion at the meeting, the JRB did agree by unanimous vote of the members present that the proposed TIF plan should be approved. The redevelopment area satisfies the eligibility criteria defined in the Act, that the redevelopment project area qualified as a conservation area, and that the redevelopment plan and project conform to the requirements of the Act. Accordingly, the joint review board submits an advisory non-binding recommendation to the village board of trustees to approve the proposed Village of Deerfield Lake Cook Road redevelopment plan and redevelopment project, and further that the village board adopt the three ordinances that formally established the proposed Lake Cook Road TIF district. A copy of the joint review board resolution memorializing this recommendation, along with the meeting minutes, have been included in the board's distribution. I'd like to thank each member of the joint review board for the participation in the meeting and their thoughtful questions, their meaningful contributions towards this positive recommendation. Should the village board agree with the recommendation of the JRB, then the three enabling ordinances will be presented to the village board for approval in March, at which time the TIF district would formally commence. A copy of the three ordinances were included in the village board packet for your reference. No action is being requested of the village board tonight other than to listen to testimony and provide staff with direction on how to proceed. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Phil McKenna. He's got a brief PowerPoint presentation to go through a little more detail of the TIF plan and qualification report.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Andrew. Make sure I can work it all right. These are just the overview of the points that we're going to cover briefly in this PowerPoint presentation. Redevelopment Plan and Project is kind of like the Bible of TIF. That's the main document that is before you tonight, will be before you in terms of the ordinance adoptions, and is the subject of the public hearing. I want to talk a little bit about just the way the TIF mechanism works, how it interacts with the village's strategic planning, what the qualification factors were with respect to this potential TIF district, and some of the key elements of the TIF plan. As background, one of the things that always keep in mind is that TIF has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's kind of the backbone of where we start. We take a look at the comprehensive plan, and we say, is it consistent with what is being done here? In this case, besides the comprehensive plan, you also have an amendment to the comprehensive plan dealing with this particular area. So both of those are found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We then look at what are the project plans and objectives articulated by staff and is set forth somewhere in the amendment or the comprehensive plan itself. So the project plan objectives are to encourage redevelopment of obsolete or underutilized buildings or sites by reducing impediments to private investment. A lot of this is the factor of age, and we're going to come to this as a qualifying factor. But to put it now, all six of the buildings in this TIF district are over 35 years of age. When you have that, you're going to have nonconformance with a number of qualifying factors. The idea is for the public sector to coordinate redevelopment, to do those things the public sector can do in order to bring in private investment. This is the area, you'll note that there's five former Walgreens occupied buildings and the Embassy Suites. It's a pretty condensed area after looking at a larger area. How does this comply with the TIF Act? Well, it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which we talked about. Has to be at least 1 and 1/2 acres, which this is. It has to meet a minimum number of criteria for a conservation area. To just spend a minute on that, a conservation area is defined under the TIF Act is what, when 50% or more of the buildings are 35 years of age or older. In that case, they only have to meet three out of 13 criteria, and there's an advantage to having a conservation area. In this case, all the buildings are more than 35 years of age or older. And finally, there has to be a but for involved in it. A but for has to be that for private investment to come, there's a belief that the public entity, the village, must put forth some effort in terms of the impediments in the area, and we feel that strongly. We feel that from our experience. I think some of the indications that the village has gotten from the private sector indicate that as well. Just to spend a minute on the TIF mechanism, particularly because if there's any in the audience tonight, we haven't been familiar with TIF. TIF is not a new tax. Nobody gets taxed extra because a TIF district is put in place. What it is, is it's an effort to take the strategic goals of the comprehensive plan and put them into place. What happens is that taxes are paid, they're assessed at the same level as they would be with or without a TIF. The rate is the same with or without a TIF. What happens then is the county divides it into two buckets. The bucket on the left is the original or base equalized assessed valuation times the tax rate. That is what's going to the taxing districts now and will continue to go to the taxing districts. The bucket on the right is the incremental revenue. That represents the incremental difference, the increase in value because the private sector has invested in the area, time the rate, and that goes into the TIF bucket or the incremental revenue bucket. It's that bucket that the village has some discretion as to how to spend that money in order to encourage private investment. But all of this is coming from new investment. It's not coming from any kind of property taxes on any property that's currently within the area. This is what you typically see in a TIF mechanism. It's obviously not that perfect, but you'd like to see that line going up, that blue line going up, representing at the end there a large chunk, and I think Andrew mentioned some of the surplus declaration that was done with your other TIF districts. This is the chunk at the end of that that would go to all the taxing districts, so it represents a benefit to them as well. So what does the village do with this, then? It brings all this together into this redevelopment plan and project. It sets the objectives, strengthening the commercial base of the village, furthering growth and furthering public facilities, and coordinating and maintaining traffic circulation. There's a number, I found it interesting, there was a number of aspects of inadequate utilities that you had in an earlier presentation tonight. Those are very evident in this area there. And in our opinion, that's one of the impediments that you have to redevelopment of the area. Which is, this is just a list of the village's strategies. What does the village do? Well, it wants to preserve and strengthen all the commercial areas, ensure that the commercial areas contribute in a positive image, and promote the unified development and continuity of the area. One of the advantages of TIF is that because it's an incentive that's available to developers, it gets the village much more involved from the start, from the planning process in terms of what the village wants to see develop there. So the TIF designation itself is pursuant to the comprehensive plan, as we talked about, and the amendment to the comprehensive plan. It's needed to address the deficiencies within the area, and it's going to position the village in a place where it's better able to address private sector concerns in terms... terms of reinvestment in the area. Findings under the Act, these are findings that we've made that are contained in the redevelopment plan and project. The proposed area meets the designation as a conservation area. That's because all six of the buildings are 35 years of age or older. At least thirteen of the, at least three of the 13 qualifying factors are needed for a qualification area, and we found four factors. Lag or decline in equalized assessed valuation, that's over the last, four out of the last five years, the amount of increase or stagnation in the equalized assessed valuation has been more significant than for the village as a whole. In fact, I think in the last five years, there's something like a 17% drop in equalized assessed valuation in the area. We found deterioration throughout the area, particularly in the buildings that Walgreens used to occupy, which is the next criteria. We found excessive vacancy, I believe was the fall of 2022, that had the last occupancy by Walgreens altogether. The hotels suffered, obviously, from the pandemic. It's not fully recovered from that as well. So from the standpoint of comparing with other hotels in the northern suburbs, it's suffering somewhat as well from a vacancy standpoint. And inadequate utilities, there's a large section in the redevelopment plan and the qualification report that deals with the water, sanitary sewers, storm sewer, need for improvements within this area for it to redevelop. What are the key elements of that TIF redevelopment plan, other than what we've talked about in terms of qualification factors? Andrew mentioned the base is a little over $45 million. The protected equalized assessed valuation is approximately $135 to $145 million. That's over a 23-year period of time. The maximum proposed TIF budget is $81,650,000, again, over a 20-year period of time. These are the line items that are contained within the plan. You'll note the first three items in particular, $36 million for land acquisition and relocation, $11 million for site preparation, and $22 million for utility improvements. It really says that what you need to do in order to get private investment in the area is be prepared to help out in the land acquisition price, to help out in site preparation, and to take care of the water and other utility improvements. There's also a line item, you'll note down, the last line item before the total, the statutory school district payments of $7,400,000. Although it's not expected that this is going to bring in any residential or bring in any students, we want, we recommend putting that in the budget as a placeholder. So if something changes over the 23-year period of time, you would be able to, in that situation, take care of tuition payments for additional school students if they occur. Okay, the budget is all subject to Village Board approval. It's subject to review on an annual basis, and the budget represents the possible maximum amount of expenditures, but not necessarily within a line item. If the Board feels that a certain project comes up, and it's going to exceed the line item shown in the budget, you can switch from one line item to the else. So there is discretion with respect to that. TIF eligible costs include public improvements as well as potential incentives for private redevelopment. But a very big point is, there's no benefit to any developer because the TIF is established. Any redevelopment has to come before the Board, has to come through the Planning Commission, the ZBA. Any other procedures that are necessary under the village's guidelines must be followed, and only the Village Board can grant an incentive of any kind to any kind of private development in this area. The next steps, public hearing is obviously tonight. Andrew went through the litany of notices and publications that have been taken care of already. Joint Review Board, there's also an Interested Parties Registry, which was established at the beginning, where any citizen or any group that wanted to have the full flow of information, all the materials that have been prepared, had to sign, was able to sign up and get that. 14 to 90 days after the close of the public hearing would be the timeframe for the Village Board to consider the ordinances that are placed before them. And then finally, just annually, the Joint Review Board will meet. This is, it's also not a stagnant concept once a TIF is established. There's an annual audit that's required by state law, there's a filing with the Department of Commerce and Community Affairs, there's annual Joint Review Board meetings that have to be met, and as we talked about before, any action that's relative to the budget or relative to any particular redevelopment of the area is going to be subject to Village Board approval. So that, Mr. Mayor, is the presentation.
Thank you. That was very comprehensive and helpful. But I have a question, just maybe a clarifying question. If we were to look at the TIF budget, which is $80 million, and hypothetically, we said, okay, we will have a public-private partnership of $80 million, max out the budget, $80 million. It is, and we foresee, what you're saying, that the EAV would be $145 million. We're looking at a $60 to $70 million surplus at the end of 23 years. Is that how I read it?
No, that's because it's budget dollars versus EAV dollars.
Yes.
So I can't give you a computation right off the top of my head. But what it would say, it says two things. One, to the extent that money comes in and you don't spend it, then it's subject to automatic declaration of surplus.
Yep.
It also says that if you get $81 million of public investment, and it turns into $145 million of private investment, you're going to get, in any given year, this is just off the top of my head, but you're talking about $8 to $10 million of additional tax revenue that comes in.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I did mess that up. Once I asked the question, I realized, but thank you for.
Sorry.
Can I ask a perhaps ignorant question, but how do we come up with that number of $145 million?
It was really looking at what kinds of potential, particularly with respect to the comprehensive plan amendment. So what kind of potential, and I'll let Andrew supplement this, because I think there have been some calls with respect to development, interest in the site. So it was really picking, well, if A, B, and C happened in the site, what would they produce in terms of the equalized assessed valuation, just using comparables in the area? But it wasn't, it wasn't just, you know, with blinders on, I think it was with some insight as to possible development.
With specific types of development?
Yes. So we, so exactly, we looked at the C four district, minimum five-acre lots, retail and entertainment. So then, we work closely with Ryan LLC, and we say, okay, we know that what's, what could be allowed in this district.
Right.
Are sit-down restaurants. So let's envision if we have two sit-down restaurants, okay? We know there's sports and leisure and entertainment-type activities, okay? If they took up 10 acres of the 45 acres, what would that look like? So it's those type of hypothetical, but working off of guiding documents and developing a conceptual site plan. And if we were, you know, kings of the world, and we said, this is what we wanted, that would produce that kind of increment. So obviously, we have to work with the development community to produce that vision, but that increment, that vision is consistent with the C four zoning district and the comprehensive plan, and that's what we use to guide that vision.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank Phil and his team.
Yes, Phil.
And staff for their hugely sound and good work on this, so thank you.
A little bit of historical perspective. Those of us with a long memory remember the TIF district here in downtown Deerfield, where Deerfield Square is now. And when that came up, and of course, we were using tax increase in valuation, and the numerous prophets of doom and gloom that appeared, said, you can't do that, you'll take money from the schools, they'll go, they'll lose their quality, and so on and so forth. We went through the process. As we went along, we didn't always use everything we needed. It went back to the schools, they were happy. Obviously, Deerfield Square is successful, and they were happy. And people who said, this is never going to work, are finding out that a TIF district is a well-operated TIF district, is a great asset to the community. And this is even more because the area where it's going does not have schools, they're not going to lose a good bit of their tax revenue. It's a good thing for all concerned, and I think it's worth mentioning that at this point.
A bunch of us are around for those years.
Yep.
Well, it's funny, during that time, I was on the school board at District 109.
Getting those dollars.
Yeah. And there were fears, you know, that the schools would be skimped, you know, that their return wasn't going to come. But there were lots of pleasant surprises.
Yes.
Of additional revenue and things that supported the schools and really improved our funding, as it happened. So I have some direct personal history with how this works out, and it tends to work out.
It's been good for us.
So we'll come back in March and with the idea of adopting the TIF district. You're very helpful and instrumental for us in adopting our first, not our first, our third TIF district that Andrew talked about during his presentation. Thank you for that, and thank you for your help with this one.
Just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Are there any public comments? Going once, going twice? No public comments, I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
No, sorry. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and thanks again. Next item on our agenda is 2423, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the municipal code regarding tree preservation. Ryan, you got a tough act to follow. Good luck.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. So as you may know, in 2022, the Public Works Department received a $25,000 matching grant from the Morton Arboretum to use for a tree inventory survey, as well as a urban forest management plan. In accordance with this work, the grant requires updating the tree preservation ordinance and/or the tree administration manual that the village already has in effect to meet certain criteria. The grant lists 19 ordinance conditions in which the municipal code has already fulfilled 15 of them, with one condition not needed, according to the grant administrator. To comply with the necessary conditions, it's recommended that the Mayor and Board of Trustees considers amending the municipal code to incorporate the updates that are listed below. The major updates would include explicitly stating who has authority and enforcement over all of the trees in the Village of Deerfield, provide requirements for contracted tree maintenance, and then require that the trees purchased by the village adhere to the most current American standards for nursery stock. By adopting this ordinance, staff will have the ability to further preserve the urban forests within the village and comply with the standards set by the Morton Arboretum and the Arbor Day Foundation.
And if we are, if we are complying, we pass the ordinance, we're eligible for a grant?
Correct. So.
And remind me how much that grant would be?
So it's a $25,000 matching grant. We, with the work that our staff has helped with, we have met the matching grant, we just need to turn, like, turn in our, submit our results.
Which would include the adoption of this ordinance?
Correct. It would be the adoption of this ordinance, the urban forest management plan, and then the tree survey inventory that would be sent. We collected that on our GIS, and then we will export that and send it in a spreadsheet to.
But we meet the requirement for the match. So I think that's the heart of it, is we meet the qualifications that they require to get the match.
Correct.
And none of these things are out of the ordinary. I mean, requiring that the trees meet the current American standards for nursery stock, I mean, that's pretty basic. It's a good thing, that we're not bringing in plague-ridden, you know, plant material that it's not going to live. I mean, all of these are very reasonable and are things we should be doing anyway, grant or no.
We do, we do already purchase them that are in, anti-standers, but we're just putting that into an ordinance to confirm it.
Questions? Ernie? Arnold?
Um.
We, can you manage to come up here and just tell us who you are? We know who you are, but tell us who you are.
Want to address too?
Sure. You don't have to, but if you, you can.
Okay, Arnold Fuddel. On the preservation side, the village has cut down a lot of the ash trees because of emerald ash borer and so forth. What kind of trees, I would like to know, would be going, regoing in to prevent so much devastation in the village of everything we've cut down? We've cut down a lot of trees.
So what are we replanting?
I haven't seen as much replanting as cutting.
Okay. But I think your question is, what are we replanting?
What are we going to plant that will be more sustainable against some of these diseases that are going around?
Good question. Ryan, Bob, you guys, either one of you guys want to address this?
Yeah, so we do have a list of trees. We do have a list of trees that we work with our certified arborists, as well as with the nursery, to plant, to plant. So a lot of them are more, more resistant to these types of diseases, such as the emerald ash borer and other insects. So one of, we use, we allow residents to help plant trees in their right of way as well, through our 50/50 tree program, but there is a list of trees that we use.
Are we replanting one-for-one on the trees, our trees that we took down?
We are not replanting one-for-one, no.
I think to try and plant tree for tree, Bob, come on up with the emerald ash borer and with the, it just took out too many trees. We're still catching up. I think that's the point. But, but the question and the concept of diversification of your tree canopy is what the intention is.
Right.
That's what we're looking forward to, so that you're not subject to a disease will knock out 40% of your trees.
Typically, for years and years, we planted monocultures.
That's correct.
We planted tree after tree after tree that was the same tree.
Right.
And when a pest comes along, it gets them all.
That's right.
So what we work off now, and this list that the village uses, is also authorized and recommended by the Morton Arboretum, and the people who really know what is happening with new diseases and new pests, is a mixture, a combination of a lot of different kinds of trees, many of which are native, or they're bred from natives, so they're tougher and hardier. You're absolutely right, Arnold, they need to be more sustainable, but this is what we need to do. And sometimes even replanting one-for-one is not a good idea. Where we had trees before, they were too crowded. Maybe it wasn't the best place for a tree. So what we're doing now is much more sustainable. I'm sorry, I spoke for you.
I second what she said.
Thank you, Mary.
But we have a list.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Arnold? Okay. Any other questions from the, any other comments or questions from the Board or the public?
There was at one time a designation, a tree community or whatever. Is that still there, and are we subject to become one or remain one?
We still qualify, and part of that's the investment you put in your trees, and I'm guessing year eight, nine, Bob? I don't know what that number is.
We are, I believe we just got our 13th year, and we just apply for our 14th.
Thank you.
And the intention is to continue to qualify for that. And based on what our practice has been and our policies have been, we will, but we also will continue to apply and seek that designation.
If there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 21 regarding tree preservation.
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 2424, an ordinance amending Class J liquor license.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Ownership of the BP gas station at 1460 Waukegan Road is requesting an amendment to their current Class J liquor license to allow the retail sale of alcoholic liquor, in addition to beer and wine, which they have been selling since 2016. The owners are proposing to store the liquor in a secure cabinet with lockable doors behind the service counter, only accessible by the employee, in an area limited to 15 square feet of floor area. Ownership is also present this evening and available to answer any questions.
Isn't there also surveillance cameras?
They do have surveillance cameras in there. Ownership could speak in more detail about that, but.
Which would be directed towards this area, right? Ownership is here, they're all nodding their heads. Any of you guys want to step up and say anything about this?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Welch, owner of the Deerfield BP. And as we all know, we have security cameras. We've been down. We've been down the road there, we're going to have it locked. I'm going to have a cabinet built. I had a lady come in and look at it from the closets in design. They've got it all figured out, how to put the locks, the glass doors, everything on it, shelves. So it should be just fine with locking doors underneath.
Great, thank you. I did pay you guys a visit with Kent shortly before the end of the year, and you showed us where the liquor would be stored and how it would be managed, and that was very helpful for me to understand. So thank you for that. Any comments from the public or the Board?
I see that the police department has signed off on this as well.
Yes.
Which was good to know.
Chief is not here, but he has.
And again, I think what you would see in this facility is it's significantly more controlled than many other retailers.
Oh, no question, no question.
Recognizing that it's kind of a, you know, it's a convenience place, but from a staff perspective, police department perspective, they've taken a lot of good steps to try and minimize the opportunity for something untoward to happen.
I also learned that you guys have been in this location for lots of years.
Yes.
Your dad came to visit us when we were there. Tell me how many years you've been there?
God, now, we've been there at the store for 22 years, but my wife's family, they've owned the property since probably the early 40s, the whole section from Tony Subs all the way to where the hair salon is.
Thank you for sticking around.
Yeah, thank you, it's a great community.
Do I have a motion? Let me, let me say that better. Do I have a motion approving an ordinance amending Class J liquor license?
So moved.
Second? Roll call, please.
Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 2425, resolution, please give your dad our best. A resolution awarding the water reclamation facility BioSalads land application program to Dom Enterprises for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $78,000.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The water reclamation facility accumulates approximately 1,900 cubic yards of bio solids each year and must be disposed with federal and state requirements. Bio solids are accumulated in our storage building, and we get them hauled out every year in the spring and the fall. This year was determined that instead of going out for quotes, we decided to formally go through the bidding process. And on February 9th, 2024, three sealed bids for the BioSalads land application program contract were publicly opened and read aloud. The results are as follows. Dom Enterprises with an average price for the three years of $42.61 per cubic yard, Stewart Spreading, an average price of $49.60 per cubic yard, and Sinagro Central with an average price of $50.94. The contract includes requirements to completely empty the storage barn each hauling event as well as a potential third hauling if necessary. In 2023, the WRF land applied 1,864 cubic yards of bio solids. Due to the incorporation of our phosphorus chemical, we could have an increase of up to 15% additional in 2024, more likely in 2025, and we believe that this contract will handle that additional expense. The village previously worked with Dom Enterprises on our last land application contract, 2021 through 2023, and in previous years in the past. In that contract, the Public Works Department has found Dom Enterprises to be responsive and responsible, and staff recommends that the water reclamation facility BioSalads land application program be awarded to Dom Enterprises for the full budgeted amount of $78,000 for fiscal year 2024. If you have any questions, I'd gladly take them.
Does anyone have any questions for Brandon?
So we just want to do this for one year, then? We don't want to accept the bids for subsequent years? Because we're not sure we'll still be hauling bio solids?
I don't know how to answer that question today.
Yeah.
But as of today, we would like to-
One year?
Well, I'm fine with accepting it for three years. I thought we had to do it for one at a time, but maybe I wrote this wrong.
So we're recommending acceptance of the three-year proposal,
Of the three-year contract, and I wanted-
A commitment for just one year.
And fiscally for one year.
Okay.
Because we'll have to ask for more money probably next year.
Just asking.
But you're right, this stuff is changing, and with the, with the phosphorus stuff, we just don't know what our volumes are going to be next year. It's going to be different, it's going to be more.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions from the Board or the public? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution awarding the water reclamation facility BioSalads land application program to Dom Enterprises for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $78,000?
So moved. Second?
Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Item 2426, resolution reallocating the 2024 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove. David?
Hello, Mayor and Board. This is the annual request from Lake County Partners to pool our private activity bond allocation from the state with the Village of Buffalo Grove and other rural communities for projects in the county region.
And, Your Honor, we're not seeing any need for retaining this cap for our own use based on projects that, that, we're not seeing the need to retain that. So we're suggesting that, that staff has recommended this be allocated to Buffalo Grove as part of the regional effort.
Anyone have any questions?
And we've done this year after year. This is pretty pro forma.
We have, and in my previous life with another community, we actually did this for a project, project in town. But it's a very, you have to meet certain tailored requirements, and if you have it, it's great, but we're not seeing the need to keep it for us, and we want to value, add value to the, to the larger Lake County community.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Do I have a motion approving the resolution reallocating the 2024 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, David. Item 2428, resolution approving an agreement with Metro regarding landscape plantings.
Good evening again. So in keeping with the village's endeavors to promote ecological diversity and sustainability, the village has initiated various projects to village property over the last few years. These improvements include planting and maintenance of native vegetation, pollinator gardens and rain gardens, and have the ability to reduce stormwater runoff and improve air quality while creating diverse and resilient areas. Currently, the village has 10 locations that are within various phases of ecological maintenance. The village is anticipating on performing native restoration in the metro right-of-way on Chestnut Street and Waukegan Road, or in the metro right-of-way on Chestnut Street and Waukegan Road. Due to this work taking place near and within the metro's right-of-way, Metro requires that the contractor first requires a right-of-entry permit, and this right-of-entry permit is required to make sure the contractor has all the appropriate insurance trainings, documents, agreements in place prior to the work starting. The village is required to sign a landscape license agreement with the commuter rail division of the Regional Transportation Authority and pay a $1,500 licensing fee. This, this license agreement has been drafted by Metro and has been reviewed by Village Council. Staff recommends that the Mayor and Board of Trustees adopts a resolution for a landscape license agreement with the rail division of the Regional Transportation Authority, Metro, to allow for the village to complete the agreed-upon landscape work. I could help answer any questions.
Anything for Ryan? Any public comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Will the public be able to know ahead of time what kind of landscaping is going in?
So we're going to, it's going to be the native restoration, native plantings such as the other 10 locations that we have. Our locations are in various stages of maintenance right now. So you'll see, like, at the Sunset Parking Lot, that's a fully developed native garden area. But a noticeable site such as Waukegan Road near Warwick, that's just in the developing stages. So we'll have signs posted that says that it's native restoration in progress, and then eventually, we're hoping that it'll look like the native garden over by Tanaco Boulevard and Deerfield Road.
Because last year's, whatever we planted out there were all extremely good.
Which location was that, just so I could?
Wait a minute, was that a compliment?
Did you say it did look good or didn't? Okay.
I want to make sure we got that down right.
What are we talking about, Arnold? What looked good?
You liked it.
What, what location?
The Deerfield Train Station.
Oh.
Thank you for that. We'll try to, we'll try to exceed those expectations even more so this year. And extending from the Deerfield Train Station along the metro tracks going north, too. Can you continue that?
You know, right now, it's just full of weeds and tezel and all kinds of other stuff that doesn't attract any pollinators or wildlife or anything. And this will be, you know, an effort to make it a higher-quality planting. But over time, it also will be something that we don't have to maintain the way we have to at the beginning when we're establishing it.
You're mowing a lot of it now.
Right, right.
Is it possible that when the village re-landscapes places that we could put in like, evening, you know, some of the evening plants, like moonflowers, nicotiana, so forth, in our village property?
So I'm not sure if I, how to answer that right now. We use a contractor to help us with our plantings. So he's a certified horticulturist who, who helps pick out the plants that we use, but that's something that I could, we could look into as a village.
You know, those aren't natives, Arnold. What you're talking about-
Nicotiana is native?
Well, not actually. But if you send a list, some of these plants can be utilized in the annual plantings that the village does in the containers and in the flower beds. And basically, what we're talking about now is a wilder, you know, more nativy, and they are natives, planting that, that works better in a larger scale, you know? And nobody's going to be able to get up close to the plantings along the railroad right away, and they can't smell the nicotiana or see the moonflower or anything up close. Well, maybe, but first they'll smell the railroad, the train going by. And we'd like to keep people off the railroad tracks. So we've got all kinds of plantings. If you've got suggestions, send us a note.
Yeah, I was going to say, good suggestions. We will work with staff and our horticulturists. But please feel free to contact staff offline. Yes, sir.
Quick question, Howard Christianbaum. This is on Metro right-of-way?
Yes.
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 Does Metro include, is Metro included in part of the cost for this? Or are they saying, you do it, we don't want to have anything to do with it?
Metro will never pay those costs. So, no, they will never pay any of it. It's about a village beautification slash environmental improvement project. It's, it's like we invest in the downtown train station. Metro's not, they're just not. Because that's the standard they have.
It's not their priority.
They can't. So, so for us, it's a neighborhood, yeah.
It's a nice thought, Howard.
It's not like we don't ask the question.
It's a nice thought.
Any other comments on item 2428? I will look for a resolution approving an agreement with Metro regarding landscaping plantings.
So moved. Second?
Roll call.
Obie?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2429, which kind of dovetails to what you were just talking about, I think, Ryan, is a resolution to award contract for the native vegetation maintenance and restoration on Chestnut Street.
Yeah, so the staff is proposing to add an additional pollinator garden and bioswale corridor along Chestnut Street from Hazel Avenue to the northern limits. While this project will primarily take place in the metro right-of-way, staff believes that it would be in the village's best interest to perform maintenance and landscape to ensure that native plantings are being planted and maintained. This project would be the first of two proposed projects along the metro right-of-way, with Waukegan Road being an additional one in future years. Over the past few years, the village has contracted with Footstone Inc. to perform ecological work, and staff is confident in their work. They have extensive knowledge in this field and have done outstanding work for the village as well as surrounding communities. Staff is requesting to waive the competitive bidding process and approve the resolution to award the contract for native vegetation and maintenance, or maintenance and restoration along Chestnut Street to Footstone Inc. in an amount not to exceed $51,750.
Questions for Ryan? Okay, so the, part of the request is to waive competitive bidding, and we need a supermajority vote on that. So Jerry?
Yes.
You got that, okay.
So you need a vote here?
Yeah, yeah.
And also, Ryan didn't mention this, but it's a fairly extensive area. It's like two acres.
Yeah, I have the exact-
It's a large space.
2.1 acres of pollinator garden.
So, it's a large space, looking at the, the cost. It's a lot.
I'll look for a motion to approve a resolution to award the contract for native vegetation maintenance and restoration on Chestnut, and as part of that motion to waive competitive bidding.
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 2430, resolution to award a contract for 2024 native vegetation maintenance and restoration. Sequel, I guess.
Yep.
Yes.
So this is after everything. So the village, as I mentioned earlier, the village currently has 10 locations under multiple contracts that are within various phases of ecologic maintenance. These locations, these locations were established in year 2013, 2020, 2022, 2023, and we have two more that are underway for 2024. The four of them are already established with maintenance and monitoring, but they still require maintenance. And then we need additional maintenance for two of them, and then four of them are developing. We, we are looking to, once again, contract with Footstone Inc. to perform the maintenance and restoration work at these areas, locations. They, they have been doing this work for us for the past few years, They have been doing this work for us for the past few years, and the village is happy with their work. Staff is requesting that the, staff is requesting that the board, the mayor and board of trustees waive the competitive bidding process and approve the resolution to award the contract for the 2024 native vegetation maintenance and restoration to Footstone Inc. in an amount not to exceed $26,765.
Questions for Ryan, by the board or the public? Okay, I'll look for a resolution to award the contract for the 2024 native vegetation maintenance restoration, sorry, for 2024 native, see, you messed up now, I'm messing.
I'm sorry.
For 2024 native vegetation maintenance and restoration and to waive competitive bidding.
So moved.
Second.
And you know, I would mention, too, about competitive bidding. This is a very specialized service.
And that's why we're waiving it.
And that's why there aren't people you can go out to get bids from.
It's very narrow-focused.
Right. It's a narrow field, so.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Mayor Shapiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Items for discussion by the mayor and board of trustees. I have nothing other than, great work tonight. We got a lot accomplished. We did some pretty meaty stuff and pretty heavy stuff, so thanks, everyone, for your hard work tonight, and we have an executive session after we adjourn this meeting. Trustees, anything? All right, Kent?
You said it all about missing trustee Seiden and staff shares in that sentiment, and we will miss Bill every meeting we have, as well as every day in between, but we want to thank him and his service to the board.
Now I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to...